Call to order, City Commission Meeting of Tuesday, March 19th, 2019. The records show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Are there any changes to the Order of Business?
No, President Decker, there are no changes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gah. I'd look for a motion on the Order of Business unless a Commissioner has a question on the Order of Business.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business.
Second.
With a second. All in favor of the Order of Business state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The Order of Business is approved. Consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that Commissioners wish Now I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the consent agenda. We do have one timetable at 4:45 this evening, the Sunrise Youth Bureau. We will proceed into our non-timetable agenda, and the first item up on our non-timetable agenda is an item for me to introduce an outstanding young lady from the community. And in our presence, we have Ms. Hannah Rathgaber. She's been invited. She is a Girl Scout Gold Award winner and was just presented with that honor on the 19th of March. And she also with another young lady, Ms. Nicole Sadowski, who could not be here this evening because she is the State President, if I'm correct.
Yep.
So she couldn't make it, but Hannah is here, and she's going to give us a little rundown, a little introduction and rundown of what she did.
Good afternoon. My name is Hannah Rathgaber. I'm a senior at DHS, and I'm here to tell you guys about my Girl Scout Gold Award. I've been in Girl Scouts for 13 years. I was a Daisy, Brownie, Junior, Cadet, Senior, and now I'm an Ambassador. Girl Scouts isn't just about selling cookies. It teaches you how to be a leader and how to affect positive change in your community. The Girl Scouts Bronze, Silver, and Gold Awards help you to do just that. They give you a chance to address an issue of your community and then come up with a solution. For my troop's Bronze Award, we put together bags of hope, which were goodie bags for children in the hospital. For our Silver Award, we put together a camp trailer, which has all the supplies you'd need to go camping. So now whenever a troop in the Dickinson area goes camping, they just take the trailer with them and they're good to go. The Silver and Bronze Awards are done with the rest of your troop like a group project, but the Gold Award is an individual one. For my Girl Scout Gold Award, I started a community garden at my church, St. John. It's called the Garden of Grace. I started in the spring of 2017, and over that summer and fall, the men's Bible study and I built six raised garden beds. In the winter, I talked during a few of the church services to let people know about the garden and how they could help. Then last spring, a group of volunteers and I got together, and they helped me plant lots of vegetables in the garden, and some of those vegetables were donated by the botany class from DHS. Over the summer, volunteers signed up to be caretaker of the garden for a week at a time, and during the summer, I popped in every once in a while to check up on the garden and chat with whoever's working. In the fall, we started harvesting every Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday so we could take in the fresh produce to the AMAN food pantry. Overall, we ended up donating over 300 pounds of fresh corn, squash, broccoli, cauliflower, zucchini, cucumbers, peppers, beans, carrots, Brussels sprouts, tomatoes, and even strawberries. That was over 300 pounds of fresh food that went to help feed hungry families here in our community. Later in the fall, a group of about 25 volunteers came together, and they helped clean out the garden and get it ready for the next spring. I designed this garden to be sustainable so St. John will be able to plant, harvest, and donate produce every year. I really loved working on this project because it surprised me and it taught me things about myself. I learned how to woodwork, take care of a garden, public speak, manage my time, deal with conflict, communicate effectively, and be a better leader. The Garden of Grace made a substantial difference in my life, the lives of the people who received the produce, and the lives of the volunteers. I hope it will continue to impact people in our community for years to come. Thank you.
Well, outstanding. Ms. Rathgaber, what are your future plans?
I'm going to UMD in the fall for biology. Yeah. I'm thinking med school right now, but I'm not sure.
All right. Well, congratulations again.
Thank you.
Nice job.
All right. Next item up, City Attorney Murtha, we have a retirement plan amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Commission. This planned amendment is being brought to you. It amends the Closed Defined Contribution Plan as was previously discussed when we were going through the transition to N D PERS. Part of that transition involved not just enrolling participants in the new plan should they elect to move, but also amending and making modifications to our Defined Contribution Plan to reflect those changes. So if you, I can briefly go over some of the changes that are being presented to you, but they essentially recognize the closing of the plan. They increase the contribution rates to be consistent with those contribution rates that are going into the N D PERS plan on both the employer and employee side for consistency amongst employees.
Mrs. Murtha, what was the increase? What did we go for?
From five to seven.
Five to seven, okay.
And the, some of the other amendments allow employees to withdraw funds from the Defined Contribution Plan in order to purchase service credit in the new plan. So this is, those are essentially the changes that are being met now. I will let you know that staff is recommending approval and we're asking that these changes be adopted. However, in the course of reviewing our plan document, we have inquired about and are probably going to be in the near future seeking additional amendments to the Defined Contribution Plan that would be of benefit to our current employees, both the ones that are still actively enrolled and participating in the plan, as well as those moving to N D PERS. For example, we found out that it is permissible for us to add a hardship provision to the Defined Contribution Plan that allows individuals to withdraw funds for things such as medical hardship and the finances associated with that. So we are reviewing that information at this time, so this may not be the last planned amendment you see, but as of right now, these are the changes that are being requested. And just to let you know, our consultant did indicate that we can make all of these amendment changes effective January 1st of 2019 and that we're permitted to do so during this calendar year. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Murtha? And this is an amendment, this is not, is listed on our packet as, is it a new ordinance or just an amendment to the ordinance?
Our, so it is not a new ordinance. The Defined Contribution Plan document is itself a document. The ordinance that is related to the Defined Contribution Plan indicates that the city will maintain a plan document. Unlike the Closed Defined Benefit Plans where the plan document for those plans is the ordinance, for this one, it's the only one that's not.
Okay. So then we're just looking to approve the amendment?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Murtha? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the amendment to the retirement plan.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the retirement plan amendment. Next item up is a resolution for sponsorship for the CDBG for Kildare Mountain Manufacturing Expansion, and that will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker, members of the Commission. Presented is a resolution of sponsorship received from Roosevelt-Custer Regional Council for the Kildare Mountain Manufacturing Expansion, which is a community development loan fund. This sponsorship is a step that is needed for the KAMM to receive funding for their project, and Roosevelt-Custer Regional Council is the grant writer for these funds. The City of Dickinson is the financial pass-through for these grants. The city currently handles other grant projects through Roosevelt-Custer Regional Council, and our support is strictly in the capacity of just being a pass-through amenity. The resolution acknowledges that the city is aware of this grant and we approve to be a sponsor. The finance staff recommends the approval of this resolution, and your resolution is presented in your packet.
This is Resolution 10-2019. Any questions or comments from Mrs. Carlson on the sponsorship?
Mr. President, I would move to approve Resolution Number 10-2019.
We have a motion to approve 10-2019.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 10-2019. Next item up is our Hiring Journal, and we have Mrs. Nomenek coming up.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. President, President Decker and Commissioners. Before I begin with the Hiring Journal, I would like to call up our new Risk Management Specialist, Greg Beck, so you have an opportunity to meet him.
Hello, Mr. President, City Commission Members. My name is Greg Beck.
Welcome, Mr. Beck.
My name is Greg Beck. I'm glad to be here on board with the City of Dickinson, looking forward to working with all the different departments to oversee their safety management system, and hopefully we can make sure everybody goes home safe every single day. A little bit about myself, I guess. I've lived here since 1992, and I'm married to my beautiful wife, Amy, and we have two kids, 23 and 19. Worked with several organizations in the community, the Rough Rider Commission, Community Action Partnership. I was the Director of Weatherization in the Home Program there, and I helped with the tornado efforts that would be our 10-year anniversary this summer, so hopefully we don't have anything like that to deal with again, but I'm glad to be on board. If you guys have any questions for me, I would...
Welcome.
Welcome, Greg.
All right. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
All right. So first on the list, we have our police officer positions. We recently just had some interviews, and there were, I believe, five offers being made, and they are in the background phase, so hopefully we'll get lots of positions filled there. We had an internal opening for a patrol corporal, actually two positions, and those were filled with Travis Limes in Investigations, and then Shane Holtz for the patrol position. We have recently had the Animal Control Supervisor position open, and an offer has been made internally for that. Communication Specialist position was open. We did some interviews. Were not able to make an offer, and it was reopened, and interviews were just recently scheduled again for the new applicants for that. We still have the Street and Fleet Operations Manager position open. That will close on the 29th of March. We have had two street operator, maintenance operator positions open. We did make two offers. We're in the background phase for those two employees. We have a mechanic position that just closes today, so we'll be scheduling those interviews. We recently hired a water reclamation facility operator, and he is on board and working. Our Utilities Manager, as you know, that's a new position for us. We're combining the Water Reclamation Manager and the Water Utilities Manager into one position, a Utilities Manager, and that is Greg Stack, who has taken that position. Chief Water Utility Operator was still kind of on hold with some department reorganization thoughts right now. Solid Waste Landfill, we have, currently we have one offer that is, has been made and we're in the background. We did fill one position. That person started this week for landfill. Route Operator, we have, I think there were two, two offers made, and those have been accepted, and we're doing backgrounds on those. Actually, we just, I'm sorry, we just made offers and getting those two people started. As I mentioned, the Risk Management Specialist has been hired. Property Appraiser, we reopened that, and we'll be looking at scheduling some interviews for that. Firefighter, we had two positions open. Those have both been filled. We opened a part-time fossil preparator position. Actually, no, I think that's full-time, I'm sorry. And that one has been filled. That person will start in a couple weeks. Accountant position, we made an offer, and that, the offer was declined. We reopened the position, and that closes in a couple days. Then we had a couple internal positions that were like a promotional opportunity for the Accountant Budget Specialist position, and that was filled internally by Robbie Maury. We have a Payroll Technician position that was a promotional position that was filled by Aaron McMahon. We have an Outreach Services Librarian position. We're in the offer phase. We made an offer, and we're working on the background. And then Seasonal Buildings and Sites, we did hire one person so far to help out with an open position. This is a seasonal position for now. And then the Design Engineer position was, job description was just approved, and that was opened up for interview, our applicants. And then we are about to get going on all of our seasonal hiring, so we'll have many seasonal positions to fill here real soon.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the Hiring Journal?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up is, oh, we have a public hearing. I don't want to go past that, so that is at 4:45. So we will invite Director Holly Prowse from the Sunrise Youth Bureau and her associate to come forward.
Good afternoon, Mayor Decker and City Commissioners. I also have Amber Hofstadt with me today. She's the Youth Advisor, and I am Holly Prowse, and I'm the Director of Sunrise Youth Bureau. First and foremost, we are here to thank you for your continued support to the Sunrise Youth Bureau. If it wasn't for the continued support of the city and counties, Sunrise Youth Bureau wouldn't be able to continue to help kids and their families. The Sunrise Youth Bureau will use City of Dickinson funding to help assist with our current youth programming, which includes diversion, intervention, education prevention, out-of-school suspension, and attended care. The diversion program is where we receive referrals from juvenile court. In this program, the juvenile and a parent comes to Sunrise to meet with the youth advisor, which would be Amber. The juvenile is counseled on what they did to get into trouble and are given appropriate consequences. The goal of this program is to try to keep juveniles out of the juvenile justice system while still giving youth, excuse me, while still giving the youth consequences for their actions. We also provide crisis intervention for families in conflict. If a parent is having trouble with their child, they can contact us before it gets to the point of them getting into trouble with the law. Education prevention is where the youth educator goes out into the eight county schools and does prevention programming in the schools or in the classrooms. Some of the topics may include bullying, respect of rules, drugs, alcohol, and tobacco, conflict resolution, as well as many others. Classes can also be administered at Sunrise Youth Bureau as a consequence for the juvenile getting into trouble or having problems at home. A lot of these classes can include anger management, tobacco, alcohol, conflict resolution. Referrals for these classes can come from the youth advisor, juvenile court, social services, school officials, or as a parent referral. Out-of-school suspension is a program that the schools can utilize for misbehaving youth. Staff works with the youth to make sure their homework is complete. Once their homework is complete, the youth works on educational materials related to the reason why they got into trouble. Attendant care is where we house youth at Sunrise. Youth can be placed by law enforcement or social services. The Sunrise Youth Bureau is a safe place for the youth to stay until further arrangements are made. We have part-time, on-call staff that do the attended care program for us. These programs are vital to our community. We assist with troubled youth and their families, as well as provide education prevention programs to younger youth to help assist with further issues. We help assist our local law enforcement and social service agencies. If the Sunrise Youth Bureau did not exist, who would provide these programs? So from 2017 to 2018, we have seen an increase in numbers. Diversion had an increase of 70 percent, suspension an increase of 50 percent, attended care had an increase of 68 percent. Sunrise Youth Bureau classes had an increase of 70 percent, and our educational classes done in the schools had a 90 percent increase. With our current year going the way it is, I foresee it will continue to increase. 85 percent of the Stark County youth seen in 2018 were from the City of Dickinson. Some of the issues we are seeing is an increase of youth getting caught with vaping. We are also seeing younger kids having more behavioral issues as well as mental health issues. To be more prepared for the things that we are seeing, we are providing more trainings and education for our staff. Again, thank you for your continued support to the Sunrise Youth Bureau, and we would, if you guys have any questions for us, we will try to answer them as best as we can.
All right. Thank you, Holly. Any questions for Mrs. Prowse?
Mrs. Prowse, thank you. Those are some alarming numbers, I think, and something that we need to look further in in our community. What would you say the median range is for age with the students that you're seeing?
Well, I've been there since, for what, 13 years? Amber's been there for 10 years, and when we first started, our common age was around 15, 16, 17. Now we're seeing eight, nine, 10-year-olds.
And what is, what's usually their cause of being referred to your facility?
I'll let Amber answer that question.
We're seeing a lot of like anger management type things needed, so it's a lot of just basic unruly at home, not getting along with parents, not being able to do what's needed at school. It's a lot of mental health issues that we're seeing that we're lacking that, so we're lacking the help that we need. So it kind of comes down to they're being cited to get them the services they need.
We're definitely seeing younger and younger kids being cited by law enforcement, like Amber said, with unruly and things like that, and just more school issues with younger youth. You know, when we first started too, we see, for out-of-school suspension, it was a lot of from the high school, then it kind of went to the middle school, and now we're getting elementary-age kids suspended and coming to the Youth Bureau.
Which we don't always see as a bad thing, just because it's sometimes better to get to a nine-year-old rather than a 17-year-old. So what can the community do to help heal in those children?
I guess continue to provide support to us so we can continue our services. I know, I've seen, you know, a lot of things in the paper that they are looking at more mental health services coming into Dickinson, which I think is absolutely wonderful. We need that. You know, addiction services, there's a lack of that as well, so...
So you guys haven't been at the table when those conversations are being had?
For...
For, I know there's a lot of community organizations that are talking about this facility, and I think your voice should absolutely be represented there, so...
Definitely, yeah. If you know anybody, we would, we'd be gladly sit on those committees.
I'll make sure you get on the list.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Gah, we have a cable franchise agreement.
Yes, President Decker and Commissioners, this is really just an update of some things coming up. I know some of you have been contacted about this, but we have two cable franchise agreements in town, one with Midco, one with Consolidated. They, they both come up for renewal. They expire the end of April, so the plan is currently, we've pulled both agreements. They're being reviewed. They're very, very similar, but not quite the same, so we will likely bring you a similar or one unified agreement for each of them that exactly match each other. Then we'll do that the first week in April, or the first meeting in April, and then the second meeting in April would be the second reading. These are ordinances, and then it could be approved at that time. But that's coming up in the next couple of meetings.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Gah on the franchise agreements? Now, we'll move on to item three. A thank you note from Stark County Imagination Library.
You have the note there in your, in your packet. It's for a donation to the Imagination Library Board of Stark County.
Nice of them to acknowledge our contribution, and thank you for including it in our packet this month. We'll move right into Public Works, and Public Works has a 2018 Solid Waste Annual Report, and that'll be handled by Solid Waste Manager, Mr. Prowse.
Good evening, Mayor Decker and Commissioners. Aaron Prowse, Solid Waste and Recycling Manager for the City of Dickinson, here to present our 2018 Year End Report. To start things out, the Solid Waste Recycling Department provides services to the Southwest Service, or Southwest North Dakota, the area represented in green on the state of North Dakota. Goes as far north as Kildare, east to the Glen Olin area, down towards Splasher, Carson, Headinger, and then all the way to the Montana border, with the exception of Bowman on the corner there. Combined total of all incoming and outgoing tonnages of materials for 2018 were 64,844 ton. This is a slight increase from 2017, but remaining fairly consistent. 2014, 15, and 16 are high years due to the oil activity that we were seeing in our area. And looking historically, we had about a 10,000-ton increase when compared to the pre-boom era.
Mr. Prowse, the, I know there's an increase, but we also started recycling in September of last year. Am I correct? October?
Is correct. In October of, October 1st, we started recycling, and...
Do you have that in the slide with the tonnage that was diverted?
Correct. I will provide you guys an update as to where we at, where we're at currently with our single-stream curbside recycling program.
Okay, thank you.
So of the 64,844 tons, the top three are key contributors, household materials, construction material, and inert. The rest are also key players in there. A lot of the minor tonnages we didn't list on our list. So there's 41,000 tons of household materials, 7,000 tons of construction demolition material, and 2,300 ton of inert. Looking at just the construction demolition material, what it consists of is the asphalt shingles, the inert materials, and then again, the construction and demolition-type materials that come in. We had just 9,900 tons of just those materials that came in in 2018, which is about a 40 percent increase from 2017. So we're starting to see some construction activity taking place again in 2018 in our Looking at the household tonnages, 41,158 tons, which is remaining fairly consistent when you look at the past three years. Again, 2014, 15 were during the oil boom era. Of those 41,158 tons, 42 percent of them actually came from in-city limits. That means commercial and residential, which is collected by the City of Dickinson. The other 58 percent came from our surrounding service area. When we look at our stops that we make with our residential stops, these numbers are factored in based on four... in based on four, four weeks per month, and it's an actual number of stops, not the number of counts that we do service. So in 2018, the orange would represent the month of June, or the brown color, and then the red is the month of December. We just took a six-month period. And up until June, we had 25,702 stops that we make on our residential side. And then after we added in recycling on October 1st, that number went up to 41,766. On the commercial side, we did, we are still continuously seeing a slight increase in our commercial accounts. Again, same thing. It's the number of stops we make, not the number of accounts we service. There's, the steady increase is due to extra pickups and additional containers that are being requested by our business owners. This does not account for unique accounts. What unique accounts are, are those that we don't have a specific billing code for, so we list them as in a unique account. And it primarily consists of like the schools and colleges and stuff, businesses to that Moving into the recycling a little bit, these are the materials that came off of our recycling sites and the Baylor Yard itself. So we collect cardboard, paper, waste oil, appliances, crushed asphalt and concrete, yard waste, tires, and trees. Looking specifically at the yard waste itself, of the 577 tons of yard waste that were collected, approximately 300 of that was actually salvageable tons that we could turn into compost-type materials. The other, the rest of that, the 170, or 277 tons was buried into our landfill due to contamination, mixed with trees, bags, cardboard, you name it, stumps. And Mayor, as you had just asked, in regards to our single-stream curbside recycling program, which started in October, October 1st of 2018, on a monthly basis, there were, you can see up there the totals, a total of 384 tons have been collected as of February 2019. Keeping in mind, we do pay $64 per ton to get rid of our materials at the Material Recovery Facility in Shakopee, Minnesota. And then we also do pay an $1,800 transportation fee per load that we ship there, which has just recently increased to $2,000 a ton on an amendment that you passed a couple meetings The fluctuation that you see on the month-to-month basis is basically due to, obviously, the startup of our recycling program, which October was a high month because people were stockpiling materials. And then through December and January, it was due to the holidays and weather-related activity.
Mr. Prowse, just for clarification, you said $200 a ton, but you meant 200, I mean 2,000.
2,000. Sorry about that.
A trip?
Yes.
A trip, not a ton?
Yep. It went up $200.
That would be pretty substantial if we went from 64 to 200 a ton, so.
Yes. So it's, it's still $64 a ton to dispose of, but the 1,800 per trip now went to 2,000.
Okay.
How does that look on a different side? As I said, of the 384 ton that we've shipped up to 2019, February of 2019, we're at, we sent out 25 loads so far, which equates to about 15.34 ton per load. We've received a rebate of $5,372 from the Material Recovery Facility, and we actually paid the facility a tipping fee of $165. And that was because when you originally started the program, they put us into just a fair rebate program of what they use as their startup procedure. And then as the materials start coming in, they see less and less contamination, we get put into a different program. So in November of 2018, we got moved to a better rebate program. Therefore, we started seeing some profit coming back. How the whole rebate program works is, as I said, we pay a $64 a ton tipping fee, but then they buy our materials back. So basically, we have not paid a tipping fee except for in the month of October on our materials. We've actually made a few dollars back, based on what we're sending them and the cleanliness to them. The, the big number here that goes with it is the transportation fee. That's the big expense to the City of Dickinson. We spent, for the first five months, $43,512 in transportation fees, plus there's a fuel surcharge that goes on top of that $2,000 I previously talked about. And with that said, do we have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Prowse?
So so far, Mr. Prowse, are we staying within our budgeted expenses that we had kind of initially planned for?
As it's looking right now, and trying to use some historic numbers, yes. I feel we'll still be safe, and we'll be within our budgetary line. It's looking really good. I did factor in a, I want to say about a $16,000 to $20,000 loss, what we'd end up paying for the materials. So obviously, we're seeing some profits coming, which is helping really good. The transportation at that time, I did figure, I believe, 150 loads at two, 75 loads at $2,000. It was like $150,000 we put into transportation. So I think we'll be fine on the numbers and the budget that we did present at this point.
And overall, the loads are, tend to be not contaminated and?
There is, there's some contamination, but it's very minimal. We do a little bit of separation at our site as we dump it on our tipping floor, but we aren't sorting out a whole lot. And overall, DemCon Industries is very happy with the materials we're shipping.
Right.
If the weather would only cooperate, that would be our, our best thing right now.
Mr. Prowse, if I may, earlier today, you and I had a conversation about an article that, that had appeared in the Washington Post, and then popped up on a couple other news sites, about the impact that China's change in their, what they were accepting for recycling materials and how it was impacting U.S. cities. And I had asked you about it, and just to confirm, you had said that it looked like the City of Dickinson would be unaffected by that change, unlike many cities, because of the low contamination rate of the recyclables we're collecting.
Correct. Ms. Murtha, you are, that is correct. Initially, China had a 2% contamination level, but with their new guidelines and restrictions, they reduced it down to a 0.5% contamination on anything coming into their, into their country. The facility that we chose to utilize actually invested a few million dollars into equipment to meet that contamination level. So they're able to still send that material to China for recycling purposes. So it should not affect us at this point unless something else would come about.
So good news for the city.
Correct. Very good news.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Prowse?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up is Planning and St. Joseph's Hospital Development Agreement, and that'll be handled by Planning Director Hadley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this was a 2015 PUD approval for St. Joseph's Hospital, the old location, and it was approved at that point. Sat vacant, sat stagnant at that point. Now they're moving forward with it. We have a development agreement in front of you that reflects all the conditions of approval from 2015. Up on the board there, you see a site plan that basically shows the old hospital facility and some of the improvements that they're planning on making on the exterior. It's a mixed-use development apartments, retail, offices, medical, and, you know, there might be some expansion in the future that the applicant is, is talking about as well. Anyway, staff would recommend the approval of the development agreement. There will be one minor change to Ordinance 1592 on the legal description, because it was a typo on the legal. So we will be, I'll be working with Attorney Murtha, and we'll bring back a small amendment from that 2015 ordinance to amend that. And the applicant's representatives are here if you have any questions of them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley or the representatives from this, do we have a name?
Yes.
What they're planning on calling it?
We, we did, I'm sorry, we, we did get that information in. There was some, some confusion on it. It's, it is an LLC, and the first name, I'm going to defer to Walter. Is it Myers? How would you pronounce?
I think it's Myers.
Myers?
Maya?
Mia?
Maya.
Mia? Doing Business As.
Okay.
And it's LLC? Okay. So it will be no longer being St. Joseph's, right?
That's just what, in our files, what we know it as. The development agreement will be under the owner's name.
Okay. So any questions for Mr. Hadley or the representatives from the Maya LLC? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion on this.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
All right. We have a motion to approve the St. Joseph Hospital Development Agreement.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Attorney Nunn will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And we have nothing from Building and Codes this evening. Timetable's handled. Public issues of city concern not on the agenda. If you have any issue that was not on the agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, and let Commissioners know your concern. Seeing no one from the public has any concerns, we'll move on to Commissioners. Commissioners, do you have any items that weren't on the agenda this evening that you wish to discuss? And Commissioners have no items they wish to discuss, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
We are adjourned.